...on the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands one nation under God, in whose law the religion and justice are.
Thank you very much. So we are beginning the budget season with our first budget workshop here, and my Henry or business official has prepared a presentation for us. You ready to go?
Yep, we're ready to go.
If you go to the first slide, as Barbara Day said, this is the first of probably three or four budget workshops that we're going to have. And I want to first remind the board as well as our community that Spring's mission statement does not change. It's still very relevant today. Spring School is committed to providing a safe environment and an enriched educational experience for our students with an emphasis on academics, physical, social, and emotional growth. We will prepare our students to be lifelong learners with respect to cultural diversity, to embody positive character traits, and to be responsible caring citizens.
Larry? Our proposed goals for the 22th grade this year are as follows: high-quality instruction. We will provide and support engaging, high-quality instruction which promotes active learning and maximizes student achievement. Standards-based curriculum. We will provide students with a rigorous, relevant, and well-rounded curriculum that will prepare students to be college, career-ready, and thrive in a world society. Professional development. We will provide staff with ongoing professional development, sorry, professional learning and leadership opportunities in a supportive environment in order to adapt to the needs of our students. Full-child approach. We will provide healthy and safe learning environments that promote connectedness, creativity, and compassion for all students. Resources. We will be good stewards of our resources and pursue new avenues to support the goals of our district.
The following is a list of things that we've watched maintain in this program. A robust pre-K technical educational program that meets the New York State mandate. Small class size in eight of five, not to exceed 25 students. NALC that supports New York State mandates and requirements. Remember, our special education programs have state mandates, are the yellow program, have state mandates that are obligated and required. A commitment to technology-supported instruction. I'm good at supporting the board's vision years ago along with the building administration to have phone books. Now we can say that we have phone books eight through eight, where students are able to log on on their own in case we have to go through a major disaster. Extra curricular programs. I'm proud to say that we haven't disappeared when it comes to sports. And it's up and running. Our Alcor ran beautifully this year. Our middle school play just started. Robotics has been running. So we want to maintain those extra curricular activities that are so important for our students. Our school security guards have been really fantastic through this last two years and are really so well received by our community and by our students. Out of the social and maintenance staff, we have a new building, but we've invested in it and we need to maintain what we have and look at our current facilities and make sure that they are all up to par for our instruction and our learning. Police staff, bus drivers, and bus monitors. We did pretty well this year in our own work, but we are short of a full-time driver and a part-time driver, and our drivers have been doing double duty to make sure that sports runs are running before school extra, our help is running. So they are really, we couldn't do it without them. Permanent substitute teachers and teaching assistants. Again, thanks to the board, we have had some permanent subs. There's been a shortage, you know, nationally, nationwide, but we've been very fortunate to have some pretty good substitute teachers and teachers. Quality professional development and ongoing curriculum work. It's been a challenge with a lot of substitutes, but we've found a way to do as much as we can. Our legal circles are running after school hours and our teachers are fine up for that and trying to push out as much information during the school day. Remember, some of our teachers have cheap hour periods in the day, so one of those is like a professional period where they get their colleagues and have time to do some sharing of ideas. Comprehensive social and emotional programs and restorative support. Again, with the help of the Board of Education, that restorative program has worked very well after school. It's paid some dividends with our students who need that extra time to reflect on what they can do differently. Our S D L program is so important to our students and to our staff right now. Our psychologists again, and social workers and guidance councils, I know they're a little bit struggling, but I have to say that mental health staff that we built here at Spring's is really very important to the whole operation. Our enrollment. So if you look at the class size currently, 2021, and then look over to 2223, you'll see we have some class sizes under 25. That's kindergarten is always some, we never know what they're usually in, the 70s someplace. So even with four sections, there'd be 19 in kindergarten class. First grade for next year, with four sections, there'd be 18 in a class. For second grade, you're looking at 19 in a class. For third grade, we're recommending three sections, and that would be 23 in a class. So that's a negative. For fourth grade, also recommending three sections, that would be 21 in a class minus there. But when you go up to fifth grade, you'll see that we went from three sections this year to four sections next year, because there'll be 78 in that enrollment. So that goes up. So we're still at a one negative. And then in sixth grade currently, we have four sections that would go down to three, and then seventh grade would stay at three, and fourth grade, eighth grade would go to four sections. So you can see the range for our class sizes are from 18 to 23. It could be 24, 25, or 26 in those accelerated classes before that bump this year, and then it makes the other classes at six, seven, and eight a little lower. Special ed are there. Those are our self-contained classes, but this chart does not show the board is our inclusion program where you currently have a special ed teacher on every grade level. Again, we didn't know what our enrollment was going to be like for this past year, so we set our enrollment for next year. We can look at the inclusion model as well and see if we can make any reductions there. As you say, it's going to be a tough budget season. Our enrollment is still total about 1,100, 1,115 with your high school and with your postings and categories. Those are the ones that the 50 that you see there are students that go to private school, not our.
Yeah, could you pull up pre-K?
Yeah. Pre-K currently, our current enrollment is 31. I'm projecting 54 full-time slots. That's still up to negotiations. As you know, we have 23 under the old grant that are half-days. If we want to convert those to full days, it would be 12. The new grant is for 36 full-time students, and then you add those 12, I'm not right?
Oh, yeah.
Those 42, I'm sorry, 32 full-time with the new grant and then the 12.
And where will we place the 54?
Well, the one reduction in the enrollment that you see here would give us a class in the building. That could be the other full-time spot, or it could be the two half-days. We decided to stay with half-days. Then in the front of the S Y A would be two school classes, 18 and 18, and in the back would be special ed. I would keep special ed, just kids in the back because we've got that small group for related services.
So the 36 in the front, no, we're not going to deal with that. We can start with here. But then if we just draw the, 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 um, third grade at 23, and you kind of pass it to 25, because you could knock down a class in the third grade, it must be four sections, three sections, right?
Yes.
Down to 23.
Yes.
23, so you're looking at, how about you?
It varies. Like, right now, they're at, what, 15 plus for third grade? But they have four sections. Fifth grade currently has three sections. And that's why they go up to six, then they'll stay at six.
I'm just, my concern is that if we, we take the 54 pre-K, you're left everyone else on, you're going to make them fall back to, and then we decide to go to 18, actually the pre-K system is a school, and we need extra classes when we have that.
Are we better served having those pre-K kids, or are we better served having, as that said, like a third grade all class size in terms of what they're working in that age?
Well, we've got 23 in third, and then fourth grade you've got 21. And remember, your kindergarten in first grade have a T A. Second and third grade, well, just don't have a T A.
Right, yeah, yeah.
But how many inclusion studies do we have in those grades? Do we have special ed teachers in any kind of grade?
Right now, we do.
Everyone, every class?
Not, not every, but, no, 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 on a grade. Every grade level has an I C.
And you keep that current, that's it, right?
That's, that's the discussion.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, they're, they're in the process of annual review right now, so we don't know those numbers right now.
Those are the budgetary items, right?
Yes.
Right, so if we, if we do that for classroom, I'm just worried that we're opening up the 54 pre-K students. Pre-K, you know, it's not fine, right?
No, with the, the grant, they will only reimburse us for the number of students we have in the program.
I don't understand.
As of today, there are 24 students registered.
Right, there's 24. You're looking to go to 54. I understand the grant money is based on, if we run out of classrooms, where are we going to go? We just put the addition on to size out classrooms for the students we have. Now we have small room, and we double the size of pre-K. The full-day program is always a half-day program. And now we got the grant money. I understand that. And we fit it here.
The, the reason for the reduction, Pat, is not to make room for the pre-K in the building?
No, well, I'd say this. I'm just saying it's just, you look at numbers, and so we can still reduce the size. But by doing that, you're gaining the classroom.
Yes.
So it almost works together. You have to look at both sides, and then show you half. Now, I'm just worried that if we, so, what is it? I know junior high, junior high is 23, the next class size is 41.
Yeah, but junior high is typically.
There's always size.
Yeah, in fact, you know.
Those students.
Junior high are 26 to 29.
They also look a little, you know. Well, the reason our pre-K program, we just have values approved, those students we have up there. They won't be different, because we made specialized.
Well, no, the pre-K is everything.
Yeah, I know that. Yeah, so now they're looking to regulate the school.
So now, is everybody going to reapply for pre-K, or we only have so many slots because the kids that are oriented automatically are in it again next year?
No, they're, they're four-year-olds. They're coming into kindergarten.
Yes, that's a good thing.
Our pre-K program is only four-year-olds.
You have to understand that there's.
Oh, so they don't start at three in the pre-K here?
There's such a need for pre-K. When you have surrounding districts who have gone full day, and in our district, you have a lot of parents that it's a tough situation for them. We could call it half-day, and they're looking not only for pre-K, but also childcare. And so going to a full day, you're going to attract a lot more of our parents who have been kind of doing other things.
You know what, I, yeah, I understand that, yeah.
And again, that's just the reality. And when you look at the demographics, and they just came out this week, we're looking at childcare, what they call desert areas.
Yes.
East Hampton has, and they go from, the desert area is classified from zero to 100. Below, meaning that there's very few childcare, uh, children, and high means there's a lot. And Springs is one of the highest, like 85%, 85 out of Mohammed. East Hampton, East Hampton Village is 35, and East Hampton itself is about 45. And so they break it up into these different areas, and that's how they're looking at funding for different situations because of desert areas. My issue, and looking at all that, is, yeah, it's great to, it's like with voting 36 or whatever else you get. But a lot of childcare facilities and pre-Ks take kids from different areas because of parents' desire. But again, right now, because of the full-day programs, kids are gravitating towards their district that's providing. So that's why you see a large number of kids. If you weren't anticipating, you need your pre-K. But your point is, well, thinking because where are we going to put these kids? That's something we're going to have to talk about.
We have a lot to talk about.
Because, you know, I know the difference. I mean, I don't know what discussing, in a work session, you discuss it now, or do you do it?
I think a work session.
A specific topic from that work session?
Well, I think if you get into the budget process, there'll be a real opportunity to get permanent, I think, nice.
Well, no, so someone, that's a base question.
Well, I think, I think, give another option.
If we're talking, it would be one discussion.
This, this enrollment chart is only a first glance. Once you hear exactly where we are financially, you might be looking at this chart very differently. Right?
All right. Next here, you have, starts with the tax cap. And as you know, our school has never exceeded the tax cap. We've had to make do with revenue restrictions. We have never attempted to exceed the cap. The cumulative effect of low caps, increased costs, everything we procure, increased costs for everything we procure, uncertainty of future state aid, and a desire for a rigorous and relevant instructional program makes it more challenging to deliver a budget that stays at or below the cap than ever before. Next slide up. This next slide is going to give you a, a five-year look, uh, look ahead, starting with the current 2022, 23 budget. This is the tax cap calculator. And as I mentioned to you a while back, we were looking at about 5.45% tax levy limit. And what that does is it takes the tax levy that we, we levied this year, which was $27,589.155. We're allowed to increase that by what they call a tax-based growth factor, which the state sends down, was at 1.0076. We have some adjustments for the pilots, the payments in lieu of taxes. Last year, we collected $127,000 and change. We have four properties in the district that LIPA or P S E G pays in negotiated amount, which is the pilots in payment in lieu of tax. So we have to back that out for, to start this formula. We have certain capital levy items that are exclusions from the prior year, which are basically the interest on our TANs, the issuance of the bands, not the issuance, but the payback on bands, buses with interest, and our bonds. We've got the 2002 edition bond that's coming to an end. We've got the new bond for the capital project that's just started. Last year, if you recall, the new bond was about $500,000, was basically interest-only. Then we come down to the next factor to increase the levy amount, which is the allowable growth factor, which is the cap at 2% for the consumed price index, whichever is lower. So this year, it's at 1.02. At this point, we add back the pilots to the current year, and I'm using the same number, about $27,086. The town, I was talking with the town this week, and she has to calculate this every year. And what's made a little bit of a wrinkle in things for me is the fact that LIPA, P S E G, Long Island, they added 21 properties within the town of East Hampton altogether. Not increasing in Springs, but it does impact what we're going to get as far as the pilot. As it stands right now, we could get up to $190,000 in pilots, but P S E G are, they're already fighting that. So it's better just leave it the way we planned it, 127,000, and hope for the best. So that brings us down to a tax levy limit before any adjustments and exclusions for the new year. So the new year's adjustments, which includes the capital levy, goes from $850,000 to $1,413,000. And most of that is because now in this next year, the 22, 23 school year, we're going to be paying not only the interest, but also first principal payments. We're now going to be at a point where we're going to be paying just for the capital, the new capital project bond, we're going to be paying just over $1 million per year in principal and interest. And it's going to stay that way for the life of that bond. We also can make adjustments for any additional E R S and T R S contribution increases greater than the 2%. So with that in mind, it brings us some exclusions of $1.6 million added to the $27,479. Tells us that we, the maximum tax levy at the cap, our adjusted cap would be $29,093,000. That equates to a, that's the 5.45% increase. When we rolled forward the budget and took into account certain increases and whatnot, we came up with a number of $29,927,972 of tax levy that we will need for next year, which gives us an 8.48% tax levy, which is about 3% greater than what the tax cap limit is. So we are going to need to either pierce the cap and go for the additional $835,000 that we need in tax revenues, or we have to make $835,000 of cuts out of this budget. And in order to get those cuts, as I said, most of, I've been saying this right along, most of the cushy areas that we had in the past are no longer there. We are right down to the bone. So we've got one, you know, we've got, we've got a lot of hard decisions to start looking at making. Do we, do we increase class size? And as a result, can we then reduce the staff pool and save money there? Or, you know, are there other, there really no other areas of the cut. The debt service is the debt service. The tuition is the tuition. Unless we can get rid of some high school-aged kids out of the pool, we're kind of stuck there. And even at that, that has been probably a big stressor on our budget this year, is we all of a sudden had such an influx of new high school students to, to, that we're, we're now spending almost a half a million dollars more in tuition at the high school than we had budgeted.
And that's taken a pat in this, the number of savings.
Some of it is. We were figuring that we were not going to stay at the same sustained height. It might seem a little bit of a drop-off, so we tried to back it down. And that's definitely a little aggressive to do that. But if we want to be conservative, we keep it at the higher level of students, which means that's going to create more demand on the budget. We're going to have to do, pierce the cap rather than more to build that roof. So, so basically, we're pretty much at the same place we've always been, from my perspective, that we have to cut anywhere from $500,000 to $900,000 for our budget. And since that, we're not at the same place because what you're saying is that because we've been cutting down, and we're to be below the cap, then the places that we normally go to are not there anymore. And there are additional places that have been added because of the capital improvement project and other things that have raised the amount of money that we're paying, which is not revenue that's coming in, where it's actually, there's expenditures that are hitting us hard. So, so, so we're at that point that we thought would be. Yeah, we've kicked the can down the road as far as we've been kicking. We all had that discussion years ago, that we're kicking the can, where we're going to be.
Correct.
See, we're in a sense, we're between rock and hard places this much this year.
Right.
I mean, we can still cut, but it's not the same kind of situation you've been in the past, where we can.
Any number of major starts.
Yeah, we agree upon the rate.
Yeah.
So, but that either the budget is still a bit under shot, we took the part shot.
And keep in mind, I still have a bit of work to do to start doing my fund balance until the end of the year. But right now, the way it's looking, I don't anticipate having any extra fund balance left over from this year to help pay for the taxes next year, other than the $735 that we did this past year. So are there going to be surprises on either side? Well, we're monitoring all of the costs, all right? I was checking today our healthcare, our fuel oil, so far, it's really early. We're 2% above what we paid last year for the same period of time. Our electric bills are running about 27% greater than what last year, but our budget, we had increased by 35%. So we're okay so far. Transportation overall, without salaries, this is just maintaining the buses, running the buses, fuel, oil, all that stuff, is running about 32% above what it did last year, but we increased the budget by 40%. So I think we're safe still there at this point in time. So those are some of the areas that could fluctuate as time goes on, especially if fuel prices continue to climb like they have, they have been. I think we're going to start settling in on the electric, because we did have some issues with, you know, some of the electric stuff. Keep in mind, some of the heating systems that we now have, roof units servicing the main office over here and the gym, run off of electric. You know, so that's going to automatically boost up that cost. That's why we had to increase the budget to those in anticipation of that. I think where else we'd have it? Yeah, the health insurance, we're looking at about a 15% increase on the health insurance overall. The T R S contribution.
That's high.
That is, it's high. Remember, last year, we had a reduction.
It's crazy.
Um, our T R S number for next year is going from 9.5, about nine and a half percent to 10 and a half percent on salaries. E R S is still remaining about the same. I don't think that's changed much at all. Tuition, we know what the tuition is. It's.
A contract.
We have a contract, but that tuition, the rate itself is going up at 2%. That was part of the big deal with East Hampton, and we keep it regulated.
Now, we're halfway through. Have we gotten anything, like to check our enrollment? I mean, are we accurate, or are we a little?
We have, right now, we have September, October, November, the business office that have been approved, reviewed, finalized. So those numbers are a little bit, like I said, enrollments are a little bit higher. We still have December, January in-house that are being reviewed by, Kristen Turner, who's reviewing it, and Devin reviewing it, before it comes to business office. So I haven't seen that yet.
Instead, we get over 100 residents. Over 100. All right. Yeah, we discovered one of the high schools.
Of the 100?
Out of the 100.
Mike, can you play something on this chart to me? It's working here. So you're doing these projections ahead, and this year is the only year where we have this shortfall. So how does that translate into the other years?
All right, when you look down the chart and you get down to, the line where it says current fiscal year proposed levy net of the reserve of $29,927,972, that number becomes next year's starting point for calculating the tax cap, and then it just rolls through the same. And you'll see the $1.4 million in capital levy in current fiscal year in column 22, 23, becomes $1.41 million as the capital levy that appeared in the 23, 24 column. I already know, I already know based on our debt schedules, what those debt payments are going to be going all the way out. And the reason it's going to drop from $1,413 this year down to $1,220 is the middle school, the old middle school bond is gone.
So if we're looking at the numbers at the bottom in terms of, like, projected going forward, it looks like we would have percentages that maybe they've been part of the tax cap?
Yes. That's the plan at this point in time, a lot can change.
Correct. Do those numbers, do those include us deducting $830,000? Or is that, if we had deducted that, we still have that number?
No, this is assuming that we're going to pierce the cap.
So this, so the going ahead numbers is assuming that we're piercing the cap, we're going at 8.48%.
Yeah, yeah.
And then going forward, all those years, we would be tax compliant?
Yes.
Okay.
And if, I gave you one of some numbers up, and if that's here. I did one of some numbers, but I did present it here. If we did not pierce that cap, what the impact would be, and it doesn't really change those numbers by a lot.
Okay.
You know, less than, like, 2.71 might become 2.74. Going out to 3.44, but I think it came to 3.38. So it really doesn't change the percentages a whole lot. So you're saying that if we were able to stay under the cap, it doesn't change the following years that much?
But there was a health insurance increase of 15% versus higher here on the ERS increase by 2%.
So we don't know what that is going forward.
Right, and it is.
Yeah, no, I know. I'm just saying, if, once we hit 22, 23, the substitute's here, and we keep that the same going forward, we'll have nominal increases going forward, which may not be true going forward. But that's what it would look like, assuming everything else stays the same.
So this is assuming that this, this year is particularly bad.
Correct.
But we also talked about that.
Yeah.
So the last, for five years, we've been talking about this is where we are going to be. Maybe just, you know, very quick, like a surprise, need, for need coming from the state as far as COVID relief and security.
Last year was more, and I said that last year, those special pandemic relief grants were one-hit wonder.
Now, what about the pre-K program? I mean, if we do try to increase it, does that bring revenue?
We, yes, we get, our universal pre-K, we've looked at about $482,100.
What's, what's good about this state aid is they calculated that for 2021 in this year's budget. If we didn't open, it's okay. So it rolls over to next year's state. So I'm glad it's there because you're seeing the consistency since state aid.
Mike, these numbers are ones without any grants, whether it's deductive or.
These numbers are just strictly off of what we expect to spend out of the general.
Wow, no grants, deductives, or pre-K.
Right. Because the pre-K and all that, that's accounted for in the special aid fund.
We'll see that on the stating.
But in the past, we only got like six.
Yeah, no, this year has a big head. I don't look at all, all summer money this year, but it's a one-year thing, right?
Right.
Well, the enhanced pre-K, once you have it, it's like the 621. We've had it for 10 years.
Oh, it's.
And it's going to stay, it's going to stay on.
420.
420.
420,000.
So, so actually, so is the pre-K expense in this 2022 budget?
No, the pre-K expenses is in the special aid fund.
Okay. It's not, we're not expense for it and not, okay.
Right.
Has equipment in it, furniture in it, rental of the SYA in it. You know, there was a lot built into it to the new program.
But it's not in the budget.
Yeah. It's not in this budget, but it will be in the grant budget on the special aid fund. And remember, we've got several funds that we operate under the auspices of Springs Union Free School District, but what we focus on budget gearing is only the general fund because that's where the tax levy comes from. The special aid fund is funded 100% by grants and state aid.
What is the opportunity for us to get into that solar stuff? Is there a possibility?
There is something we can look at. We do have some solar panels on the roof. I was talking with Steve, well, Jay Knox, a long ago, about the possibility of checking into adding more up on the roof. Or even now, some of these, I just think it's very unsightly. But they've got, where they put the parking areas, it's like a roof to protect people from rain when they go in their cars with their solar panels on the top to help generate more power.
We had somebody out here already, at the name of the company, Light, and he was just waiting for some of our electric bills to see what he could possibly save the district. But we had to wait for the new building to be on.
On, for a period of time. He's not sure that he's going to be able to really back it, you know, save us a whole lot of things that I have. But these are some of the things he was talking about when they built that out. And it wasn't really much there. Well, you know, there's a really big solar farm right down the road.
Yes.
It did all the lights, the less lights, yeah. But it made some.
Yeah, those LED lights will save quite a bit over time. You may not see them right away, but over time, it will keep the cost down quite a bit. The state aid, I've given you a chart here. Column A is last year, 21, 22, what the legislative, the final budget enacted by the legislature, the, you know, the enacted legislative budget. Column B is our Springs adopted budget. Column C is the last year's governor's initial executive budget. So you can see the governor's budget at $2,084,000 versus the legislative budget at $2,165,000. The legislative budget, which comes at the end of March, seems every year to be higher than what the governor first proposed. And this year, the governor's initial budget is $2,165,000.
I was on the legislative meeting on Saturday with Longwood, and the stance was that the governor has come out with the budget that everybody can support. So they didn't think that there was going to be any additional funding coming. Our foundation aid that you see here, the first one, we're probably, was a few districts that has every penny that we're supposed to get. There are districts that are still short in the foundation aid that they were promised.
Substantial.
Yeah, but we're not, we're.
No, we're not.
We're, we're there, so we can't anticipate any more money there. And I think the legislators are right. It came out to be a good budget on her part, and we're not probably going to see much more, except for maybe, you know, fully again.
And unfortunately, the line for hardware and technology aid is always zero for us because we're considered a high-wealth district based on our combined wealth ratio. So we're not, we don't become, we become ineligible for that, that money.
Like, you're listing the high-cost excessive cost aid that we, that we don't have a lot of high-cost students anymore?
It was in the beginning, the governor's original one, but it didn't come through on the, what's that, it didn't come through on the final state budget. It's not in this year's governor's budget.
I see that. It wasn't in last year's adopted budget and, uh.
Where?
It might have rolled that into something else.
They were doing that, a lot of that last year. They were rolling things into different areas.
I remember that. That's probably where that went. Find out?
I will.
The high-cost excessive aid is for those students with special needs that are above what our average is now. Our average ends up getting higher each year. I think we're probably up in someplace right now.
Yeah, yeah.
At one time, it was like $50,000. It's about the difference.
And even that, some of the high school kids, we have the higher costing ones on contract with East Hampton. We're paying just around $70,000, and the high-cost calculator is 80. So we're below that, so that's why we're going to get new for those students. Any questions on state aid?
Yes. The state aid, it doesn't come out of the budget of $297. What is the state aid?
Right, the way that works is we look at all of our expenses. We come up with a number of, what did we say, $29 million?
$297.
Well, that was, that was, that was the cost. We're looking at about $31 million total in expenditure.
Okay.
And I don't think we have a screen here. I had it at the last meeting in December. But let's say the appropriations come out of $31 million. Subtract state aid, subtract, I don't know, there was a couple of other revenues, things like that that come out. That gives you a net number, that net number becomes your tax levy.
Okay, I'll be down by.
Correct.
Check great. That's what chapter A is.
No, I know, but.
Appropriate, appropriate fund balance also helps reduce down the, for the calculation of where you come to, for net taxes you have to raise.
No, I think, you know, it's just priority. So if you look at the 29. I'll go to 29. 29,000. Our actual operating budget is 31.
It's probably be, it's going to be the 29,900.
Let's do it by 31.
Plus the state aid of 2.1 million. Plus we did 0.735 in appropriate fund balance, and we had other revenues of about $250,000. So you look, you had 31, 32, 33 million in appropriations. So that's how we got down to 29,900. Again, if I can get, my miracle, if I can find fund balance that we can move in as unappropriate fund balance to help pay for next year's tax levy, that'll help, but I can't say that for sure right now. That balance of walls, balancing tree, y'all. All right, the next screen up, next one. This is your fund balance history. This comes right out of our audit financial statement. So you can see all the different components of fund balance. You've got an area called restricted reserves. That being the reserve report is how, the reserve for unemployment insurance, the retirement and contributions to both ERS and TRS. There's an insurance reserve. There's a statutory requirement that we keep a reserve for the employee benefit approved liability. That's for future benefits that the district will pay on behalf of retirees. Then you've got your capital reserve and your repair reserve. In 2016, the total restricted reserves was 8.4 million. Then in 1718, remember, it dropped to 2.9 million? And that was because of, we took $6 million out of the repair reserve, out of the capital reserve, I'm sorry, the capital reserve to fund the startup of the capital project. Since then, we've been building it back up a little by little. So the total restricted reserves for 2021 for the audit, audit reports is $4.7 billion, which is, the two big items are the capital reserve is back up to 1.2 million, thanks in large part to the state and the town's septic grant. We were able to reimburse the capital fund for the money spent on the septic system, thereby returning the reserve money back to the capital reserve.
But does that have money for the roof repair?
No, the roof repair right now, we took just a little, just the roof repair, $1.1 million. At the end of last year, we moved that out of this account and set it up as its own project in the capital fund. So it's set up like, just like the capital project. We started out with $23 million. We also have now $1.1 million set aside.
So it's not part of the.
No, it's already been moved out. The playground hasn't been moved because we didn't have a separate resolution voted on by the taxpayers allowing us to take the money for that, that playground and set it up in the capital fund.
And where is that playground money right now?
It's right now in the, in the capital reserve.
Okay, not in the.
Correct. So the next section of the fund balance are your assigned fund balances.
One more question. Just, I don't understand why how the TRS went up so much from 1920 to 2021. Because of the percentage or?
Yeah, there's, there's a percentage formula. So 1920 was the first year they allowed us to establish that fund, and we had a limit, it was like a 2% of the wages. We can go up, it's up to 6% or something like that. So we can only bring it up another 2% until we get to that maximum number.
So what is the money in that fund? What can that money?
Which one next?
Really like retirement, not the usual.
That's it, it's just, it's just to help, when we, when we run into situations, let's say the contribution rates TRS all of a sudden goes from 10.5% up to 17%. I mean, I remember back in the 1990s, the TRS contribution rate was pushing 20 or 22%. If we all, all of a sudden have such a jump like that, the reserve would help, we'd be able to pull that money out of the reserve in order to pay it in the general fund.
Plus, we can't give up that money for retirees, especially.
Yeah, yeah.
And this is where we were, like, I was working on a reserve in a high school operation. That's another unexpected fault that could occur, like you saw this.
And that's the whole idea of all of these reserves is to protect the district in the case you have these anomalies in the expenses. You know, like workers' comp in particular, all of a sudden, you get one big case, it could wipe you out. We probably will, keep, try to keep increasing that workers' comp. But we also, because we are in a consortium, the East End Workers' Comp Board, which I'm the representative for Springs on that board, we also have money sitting in the back fund to help protect us and insulate us from any large claims. And this is a little bit extra over above second umbrella coverage.
If we ever get hit hard on ERS and TRS?
We have it in the past before we created these funds. Probably really, I'm going to say probably in the early 90s when the rates went so high, they probably put a lot of fiscal stress on the district. I haven't researched it back that far. I know when I was upstate in the Woodbury, they put a pretty, put an hit on us that the contributions to ERS and TRS.
2008 was a big, really great.
Yeah.
Here's a question for you. And they don't answer that one. It was about 3,000, 3,69,000, right? TRS has a regular bar. Is that based on the percentage of like 10% of what we pay into it?
No, they, you mean, the, the, it's based on total salaries, TRS eligible salaries, and any concrete, there's a calculation come up with the maximum that you can put in each year.
Right, but how do you cover that? Is that, the contribution, the, the pay net is, pays up to 100, right?
We pay, for instance, last year, we paid 9.5% on, on the eligible salaries into the ERS or into the TRS. Obviously, some of the employees, like tier fives, tier sixes, they have to contribute a portion of that as well.
Correct. So my question is, we pay 9% of how much money?
Whatever the salaries were.
Well, like, what, if you had a good amount, you would look at that, right? We do the increment, we pay them a year's salary, you know, right?
Right.
And you said, okay, we gotta figure a way to increase it, right, so we're paying nine point nine percent, right?
We don't have a choice in what we pay.
No, I know, it's like you say, we're paying nine point nine now, right?
Okay.
I don't really say, well, ten percent maybe, pay ten percent this year. If they decide to increase it for the next two years, they'll keep that. Is that enough money to, is that enough?
I have to, you, you have to look at it year by year, at how it affects your budget, and it very well could say, alright, we paid ten percent this year, now we're gonna pay fifteen, our budget can't support fifteen, I have to take that, whatever makes up that difference out of that reserve, assuming that reserve has it in there.
Right, so we fund that reserve, right, correctly, that's what I'm asking.
But we're trying to build it up, this is a brand new reserve, Pat.
No, not two percent.
This is a brand new reserve that just started.
Okay.
We, we can ultimately get that reserve up to a million dollars, but we can't do it in one shot, we have to do it over several years. So we're trying to build it up in steps, one year at a time.
Then optional reserve?
Some districts say It is an optional reserve, but we, it is an optional reserve, but we're taking, we're taking the you know, the option to fund this.
That's a Swallow, yeah.
Three hundred and sixty-nine thousand. Yeah, and, and keep in mind, you guys, they approved the resolution, the establishment of this reserve, and I think there was some parameters by which we had to follow, which was right out of the state uh law.
So if you agree to implement it into your district, you have to fund it at X amount each year?
Well, you have some flexibility, not, yeah, you, you don't have to absolutely fund it at that now. You do have discretion based on your financial situation year after year. But it's gonna come down to at the end of the year, when you do your closeout for the year, and we do that full calculation with the fund balance, remember that I do the spreadsheet? It shows the fund balance, and, and I come to you with that spreadsheet, say, alright, here's what's left over, here's what we need to keep the fund balance at one point two, uh, at four percent, here's the excess, how do you want to move that excess? And that's what we use, fund ERS, TRS, workers comp, unemployment, some of those things.
Oh, hold on, two percent cap.
And that keeps, so we're still in, we're still in the two percent cap, or whatever tax factors, it's not affected that, and it's keeping us, remember, we can only keep in the one talent, the one category here for unassigned fund balance, last year was one point two million, that's right at your four percent limit.
So this is twenty-twenty-one for the TRS, for, say, like, this budget that we're looking at, like, what kind of number are you looking at?
I can't tell you that, because we haven't finished twenty-one, uh, twenty-two thousand, twenty-two yet. Until we finish twenty-one, twenty-two, I can't, I, I'm not really gonna know until you finalize the budgets.
Oh, there's no
Not the budget finalized the year.
There's a lot here in this fund balance, or there could be some.
Yeah, but we can't just indiscriminately
No, no, I know, but
But you could not make, even avoid making a contribution
You could, yes, yes, yes.
For a year for
But again, you've got to look at that, case by case, and say, does this make fiscally sound sense not to fund it?
Right, so saying, we, we know this is like Armageddon here. So like, I think we do need to think about the making some drastic
And again, we'll do, this year, knowing that We will definitely, we will definitely be having that discussion when it comes closer to the end of the year, when we know the real final numbers are big, what we're gonna carry over into next year, because if you don't wanna fund some of these things with that surplus, then what do you do with that surplus? Give it back as appropriations to taxpayers to help reduce the tax levy. And we're not gonna know that number until the end of the year. That's why I need to start working on our fund balance estimate as we get more and more information cleaned up in the books.
Now, we, if we have teachers that are gonna retire, are thinking about retirement, they have to notify you by March, should we know if we have any?
How much?
But if we're, um, is it February?
Yes, definitely. I agree with what she said.
That's February.
It's February.
February first or February twenty-eighth?
No, I think it's the end of February. It's definitely February, and we don't know if any.
We haven't heard anything.
Well, well, actually, I wouldn't have figured out first number out. You know, I, they just said you put extra dollars in, two percent, that's just the budget. But you have one eighty-seven, then you want three sixty-nine.
One eighty-seven was based upon the total salaries, the eligible salaries going in.
Okay.
Okay, and that's when we looked at two year, last year.
Okay.
When we ended the year last year, we said, well, not last year, but the year before, nineteen twenty, so we went to two percent, and that's how we came up with that two percent number of one eighty-seven thousand. We did the same thing at the end of twenty-twenty-one, and we maxed out what we can contribute, and that's how we brought it up to three hundred and sixty-nine thousand.
Yes, that's, that's what I'm confused about, right, that's, I'm just
I'm just confused, so let's say, let's say, some argument, say, so I'll see what happens, right, just how, I think, okay, we all have double salaries of one eighty-seven twenty-twenty, right, and you can't increase it more than two percent. Two percent of those salaries, yeah.
But you doubled it one year, that's my question.
No, no, alright, let me go back, let's start out, you got ten million dollars of salaries, and we can put, say, this is one eighty-seven thousand, let's say it's
Using numbers.
Alright, so let's do it, it's two hundred and Six, two, ten thousand, and we can put two percent.
Right.
So let's say that's two hundred thousand, that's a match you can do this year. We can increase that fund to a maximum of ten percent, but we can only increase it by two percent each year for the next five years to get to the ten percent.
Yeah, see, we're
This is an accumulation, so it's one eighty-seven was put in for nineteen twenty, and another hundred and eighty-something was put in for twenty-twenty-one, so one eighty, one eighty, three hundred and sixty.
So, do we accumulate over years, I don't understand you with that one.
Right, that, this is
It's a grand, three hundred and sixty.
I know, it's a grand, no. Fund balance is accumulation, we have a leftover
Right, so just like the
We built one country.
No, you don't want to, no, you
But you don't have a little over like twelve percent as the capital reserve, right, you don't, we got total
All the same, all the same.
No, that's the un, that's the un, unassigned fund balance, one percent is a little You gotta look at all of these fund balances, this is like your, your retained earnings on corporations. It's an accumulation over time, based on your profits and losses, and it just keeps rolling and accumulating. So that's what this is, it's an accumulation
Accumulation, it's a total, yeah, that's what you asked for, that's what I'm talking about. That's how we get, that's
So, like I said before, we build up, we went, we dropped it to four point nine eighteen in seventeen eighteen, and we're gonna able to build up our reserves to the level of four point seven for the restricted reserves between then and twenty-twenty-one. And the appropriation, you can see, we, we, the appropriate fund balance, the first one, eight, eight hundred and seventy, seven thirty-four, and so on, to this year, seven hundred and thirty-four, that's the amount we appropriated to give back to the taxpayers to help keep the tax levy down.
Right.
The unappropriated fund balance, that's a function of what's left over that we can carry over of unpaid for purchase orders. So those are your open encumbrances that are rolled over into the new year. And then your unassigned fund balance, that's your four percent. So our total fund balance is up to six million, seven hundred and eighteen thousand. So from, like I said, seventeen eighteen total, total, we've gone from four point eight, built it up to six million, seven eighteen, which is one of the reasons, when you look at the state controllers' report on fiscal health and, and stress factors, we're in great shape, because this is a key factor that they look at. Great. Alright, so that kind of puts things a little bit, I hope.
Yeah, it's, it's
Okay, um, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three facilities projects, we just talked a little bit about the roof project, and we had voter approval in twenty-one, twenty-two, that's the one point one million that we put aside. We're looking for voter approval in this coming election to establish, to take money out of the capital reserve in order to pay for a new kindergarten playground, and of course, by taking it out of reserve, it's no additional cost to the taxpayers. So there's no tax assessment or levy on hold for that, we're not gonna borrow money from. We also have in the budget, we don't build into the budget a certain amount of money for repairs, normal routine repairs, so we're gonna do three more classrooms around the commons area to bait those floors and retile them during the summer of twenty-twenty-two. And the health, safety and facilities committee, uh, meetings, uh, we, we, we still need to discuss, prioritize, identify specific projects and, and when we wanna try to accomplish that for the district plan for the next five years, and I plan on doing the next meeting first week in March. I, I just, I'm not sure what to say, might be Wednesday. Important dates to remember, we have to issue the property tax, the budget, the property tax report card, uh, needs to be adopted on April twenty-fifth. Our budget hearing, which is the final budget hearing for the vote, should be May tenth. And the annual meeting, budget vote, and trust the election is May seventeenth.
That's on the calendar, to go on to the budget meeting.
The next budget hearing is March eighth. But it gives us a month from today to try and do it.
No, that's not possible.
No, this is, no, but it is on the budget, on the
On the calendar.
On the calendar, on the calendar.
So please get your, you know, your questions, like, if there's certain areas you wanna see more dissected, you know.
What I'd like to do is get input from everybody by next Friday before the winter recess, so that gives me time to work on it before March eighth.
What birthday?
Who's birthday, yours? Happy birthday, Earl.
Last year, you're gonna go there?
My thanks to Scubry's summer camp.
That's always thought.
Even though it's not the greatest news of the month. I think it's gonna be worth it. It's reality, though, unfortunately. And your last budget?
I'm watching, we
Yeah, so
Yeah, you're You know, it took tires off, that's all.
That's why I can't go.
That's right, it took tires off your face, can't go, come home.
It's a little cold. Uh, remember, is anybody else in any of them?
That might, right.
Deputy, may I just remind us that if you get these questions in, by
Um, L C D, we are taking, um, uh, questions at this time, but I've heard callers.
We have no callers.
Uh, okay, thank you very much. Uh, at this time, we are gonna move on to looking at our proposed calendars for next year, we have two options here.
Is, is he answering?
Yes, I'll, I'll explain these questions.
Come out with this.
And East Hampton adopted their calendar, and it's very similar to calendar one, which you need copy? So calendar one has two superintendent conference days before the start of Labor Day, has children coming back into school on the sixth, this follows East Hampton's calendar exactly, as well as Bozey's. I remember, our drive is drive for, uh, Bozey's and drive for, uh, East Hampton. So that was one of the factors that we looked at, and it's similar. East Hampton also kept the eighth as superintendent's conference day in November, which, again, we started to collaborate with them, and especially because being here, we like to keep that as another, our third superintendent conference day. What throws this calendar really off is the second of January is considered a legal holiday, we do not have a choice unless we close that day. And then you have the new holiday unit, uh, the nineteenth of June, which this year it fell on a weekend. So it did stress the calendar a little bit. Um, Easter is actually, uh, after Easter Sunday, which, you know, gets some people like the Easter Monday off, so it is the entire week. And that's calendar one, us, and it's identical to East Hampton, with the, uh, Thanksgiving Day, off the weekend, off to the winter staff. Now, calendar two is more of what our teachers would like to see, with the two superintendent's conference days, the sixth and the seventh of September not coming back before Labor Day at all. And then our students would not start school until the eighth, we would be the last school to start, their car would came out with their calendar, their superintendent's conference day is the sixth, but they go back to school on the seventh. So I know that was a concern last year to start later than everybody else.
And how does it affect the days off, then?
It doesn't, because superintendent's conference days come between twenty-one days. Alright, so it doesn't affect any of the breaks, any of the days off, they're all the same. It's the matter of really, what it comes down to is transportation, and we will then have all our drivers, all our monitors here for professional development. Those two days are really the more easier days to drive to the next one.
So, do the high schools talk on Tuesday?
Yes, the first day is school for students, for East Hampton will be the sixth. That would be our first day of calendar one. The S T A would prefer calendar two, starting after Labor Day.
It was like the calendar two, I think, some of the days off, I don't know if that's what you're asking as far as the holidays that we had to give and return to track those hundred eighty-four days still on there, um, one was the day after Easter, I think, that changed on calendar two, but not
No, um, remember, we originally looked at we're in East Hampton and had a week off before Easter. So once the Bozey's calendar came out, East Hampton shifted to the weekend.
Okay.
And we had to shift to that chapter as well. You've gotta be the same as Bozey's. It's very difficult for those students to get this day of, of school.
So, so, no, I'm not quoting her, because it looks like you're on a two different day.
Yes.
More of this
The car has only one, and I believe
And What was the What was the S T A's concern about not following East Hampton's calendar?
It wasn't about not following East Hampton's calendar, they would prefer to come back after Labor Day, not come in before Labor Day for the two superintendent's conference day.
Monique is here. It also, um, we talked a lot about the, um, really likes having a superintendent conference day, after the year had already started, when we were sort of like figuring out the case and we were working through everything, it gave us an opportunity to really, um, sort of cater that superintendent's conference day to the things that we knew we focused on because we had already been living. Um, so I think by sprinkling in the superintendent's conference days, you can, you can cater it more to the needs as to what's going on in the year, um, rather than doing it all upfront, um, and not being able to gauge what's, what's happening during Easter.
So rather than, you'd rather, you'd rather not have the two conference days, that
But it's, it's more of the back-to-back scenario.
You don't, you're not looking for that, you'd rather see this conference day another day in the year.
Correct, somewhere within the middle of the year that we can continue that
So you would spread it out.
The, the, the S T A's every calendar two has the two conference days before school even starts.
Right, she's, I think they were, they probably could have spread it out there across the year, right?
Correct.
Why does it have back-to-back, spread it out?
Where's that calendar one?
That's not a calendar?
That's not a calendar option there?
No.
There's no real difference between calendar one and calendar two, except that, that, that conference days are two are right before Labor Day, two are
Yeah, I think they were, I think they were talking about spread it out.
Yeah, our, they, yeah, that's the calendar we had looked at, I've had them sprinkled with that.
I mean, it's just a snowball, I think, you know, you have that two, I mean, you know
Well, the problem is, the problem is when you do that and it doesn't line up, but
Okay, but let's see.
There is a problem with, you know, reciprocity between, you know, staffing and kids and childcare.
Also, that's there about, they're going to put a calendar about that, and it's just not even possible, do the one on Monday, have the kids coming up, and it's like, you know, the polytask school calendar, the kids go to school, the bus The bus drivers will be ready to work. East Hampton's starting on Tuesdays, right?
Yes.
So our bus drivers will be driving buses.
Yes. No professional development.
No professional development for them, right?
No.
And I think, well, Monique was saying, now some did ask questions when I asked you, she was gonna say maybe possibly simply on making the superintendent's one of the beginning of the year, one ability.
Well, we already have the one before Thanksgiving. They're not before Thanksgiving, we already have the one in November, November eighth.
Right.
And then East Hampton is off that day, so that is another day that we can do professional development with our drivers, but it's a little late, so you wanna get the health and safety ones upfront.
Yeah, but you have one after the, after February, right? Like, the second part, third part of the year.
I, I believe there was a calendar we originally looked at, we had
What is that?
Superintendent's, uh, space in November.
These were the two calendars we discussed.
I think you had a lot of discussion.
Oh, I was just answering the question.
You know, these, these were, these, these, these were the two calendars we discussed.
Right.
The, the two back-to-back conference days in the beginning of the school year also gives time for the classroom teachers to set up their classrooms. It also gives the bus drivers a chance to do those runs, you know, the, you know, where they practice their runs ahead of time. So otherwise, you're bringing them in, you know?
Right.
And the extra day, having paid them.
Well, I, well. If you move the conference, you're not paying them, right? You pay them between conference days, yeah, correct?
Yes.
And I'm gonna try this week, I don't think you all worked out of this.
Like, parents are usually chomping at the mouth when their kids get back on summer.
Well, that's a question, we're looking to start Thursday.
That, that seems really like.
That's Thursday, we can move to Wednesday.
Wednesday would be the same as St. Parker. But then, you know, St. Parker only has the one professional development day on the sixth.
So where would you give them the other superintendent conference day that would have been a Wednesday to seven, in October somewhere?
I've never had that.
We never had that.
Yeah.
You, you, you've only had, before I got here, you only had the two conference days in here. We did not have the one in November, you always, always had them back-to-back, because in addition to professional development, you gave your teachers time to set up their classrooms. Then I came here, and I liked the election day, even though we don't have voting here, like a lot of school districts do. That's why they always take that election day, because they didn't want kids in the building when people coming in to vote. I liked it, because it gave us a chance to meet with Montauk, that was really a nice exchange that time. East Hampton music teachers came over here, now you've got Josh here, he wants to do stuff in the science and math department, and, um, English department. So that's, that's why that day is sacred, the phys ed people this year did virtual training with their colleagues up island, the nurses did virtual training with their colleagues up island. So I think the, the sacred one is program number eight, and for our principal, she likes the back-to-back to give them professional development and.
Right, so number one, okay.
Calendar one has one day to pretend the conference on September first.
And then we're in August, now August, early, we get September.
I'm saying Thursday.
That's terrible, calendar. God, we've had that before, Amy.
Yeah.
In August, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
And what's Friday and the second of September?
We stay away from that to give everybody a four-day weekend for Labor Day. We've always taken the Wednesday, Thursday, that's what, that's.
And I always remember that, kids always come back on the Wednesday. I always remember that.
It's nothing I can find, baby.
No, they did the second. The Friday before?
Or the first.
No, you could do the first and the sixth superintendent's conference day, or the second and the sixth superintendent's conference days, and then the seventh students come back. But St. Parker doesn't have their superintendent conference days on the calendar, they just have their first day for, uh, the end of the year, they have one superintendent conference day on the sixth, or they go back to.
Well, parents have their kids, and the high school kids watch it.
The high school kids will be back at school on the sixth.